City of Statesboro, Statesboro City Council. I would like to ask our Councilman and Tribe's Chance to please leave us an invitation in a place where we exist.
And naturally rant our rant from the car. Whew, okay. If y'all would bow. Glory to my Father. Please give us the wisdom and the guidance to make decisions that would glorify your name and that would help our city move forward in a way that would be pleasing to you, Lord, and please watch over our state, our country, and our people in a time that we're in right now, Lord, that we need your guidance more than ever. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no beginning, borders, or all.
One change on the agenda today. We will not be recognizing Shanny Fraser. We will be doing that at a later meeting, and she will be put back on the agenda as the winner of George Pre-K Teacher of the Year, one of the two winners. I happened to be there when Governor Dale's wife came and presented that. That was very exciting. First time a Pre-K Teacher of the Year has been named for private pre-k facilities in the state of Statesboro, so that is exciting. Before we get started with our agenda today, I want to talk about what was in the news last night. I'm going to read a release that was issued by the Georgia Bureau of Investigation as it regards an incident out of Georgia Southern, use of force and resulting down of an individual out there. So, this is their press release, and I'll attach a couple things to them that, and then say this is the only statement that will be made about the City of Statesboro at this time, and Deputy Chief Rob Ryan will not be making any further statements. If Council has a question on Deputy Chief Ryan, please feel free to do that on the rubber basis. On Tuesday, October 4th, 2016, the Georgia Bureau of Investigation was requested by the State Patrol Police Department to investigate an officer involved shooting. Preliminary information from Statesboro authorities indicates that on Tuesday, October 4th, 2016, at approximately 1:08 a.m., officers with the Statesboro Police Department responded to 1699 Statesboro Police Circle regarding an armed robbery home invasion. It was reported that three suspects entered a residence and held the victims at gunpoint. Officers searched for and arrested one of the suspects who was seen. A second suspect was located but fled. Officers deployed a taser unsuccessfully during the attempt to arrest him. An officer located the second suspect at the rear of another residence in the area. It also reported that the second suspect was in possession of a firearm, and shots were fired during the encounter. The second suspect suffered a fatal gunshot wound. GBI agents are presently interviewing witnesses and processing the scene, and autopsy will be performed later today at the GBI crime lab in Salam. A third suspect is being sought by the Statesboro Police Department. Anyone with information is asked to call (912) 764-9911. The GBI will continue its independent investigation to determine what occurred during the incident. When the investigation is complete, it will be turned over to the District Attorney's Officer, excuse me, Office for Review. The Statesboro Police Department officer that was involved with this has been placed on administrative leave pending the outcome of an internal investigation per policy. The GBI has asked that we not release the name of the officer involved pending investigation today. It is very possible that there will be a media release later on this afternoon with more information, possibly including that officer's name. They're going to release as quickly as possible with the appearance of the investigation wrapped up to their satisfaction. Are we... I want everybody to know, it was said in this release, but I'd like to reiterate, that once it was determined that a fatality was involved, a shooting slash fatality, our police department, specifically Deputy Chief Ryan immediately nominated by the GBI, who promptly arrived and took over that criminal investigation. So, that's where we are with that. Sorry to have to start our meeting out that way today, but I know there's been a lot of concern about this incident because it happened very close to Georgia Southern University, and I wanted to make sure that everybody was out there just to work things out at this time. So, we will move on with our agenda with item number three, which I'm sorry that this recognition has to follow that, but it's a recognition to be very proud of. We probably have the best human resource management chapter in the state because they get recognized a lot. So, we're going to do recognition of the Statesboro area, SHRM, Sherman, for being named the 2016 Best in Georgia Chapter of the Year. And we have a couple of people with us today that I'd like to come forward. Charlie Powell is president-elect of this chapter, and Curtis Lee, I thought I saw Curtis, but there you are, is president of the chapter, and Jeff Grant works for us and is in the chapter. Is that fair enough? Past president, that's right.
District Director.
And District Director, well, nobody gave me that on my notes, so I just wanted to go ahead and purposely leave you off, which is not on the sticky. So, if y'all don't mind, come forward, and then one of you speak and tell us what's involved in getting that recognition, and I know that y'all had it two years ago, or like...
Twenty-four.
Two years ago, okay. If you don't mind stepping forward.
Sure.
If I go ahead and just tell us...
Okay. All right. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I am very proud to serve as the president of our local chapter. This is an awesome chapter. In 2014, they won this same award. At that particular time, it was primarily for the work that had been done in workforce readiness. I'm proud to say that this year, we continue that legacy, but we shifted and really stepped up our game a little bit, and we were awarded this award primarily because of the work that we're doing with Georgia Southern University Students. Our chapter has formed a strategic alliance with the college chapter. We set forth a memorandum of understanding, which binds us together for internship, relationships, internships, job sharing opportunities, scholarships, joint activities, and so forth. We were recognized for strategic vision that brought about that union, and all the good work that it represents for our chapter, and the support that it provides for academic pursuit of human resources, major, and career, as well as the way that it highlights, the way that the chapter, the academic partners that we have, can work with local business and industry to affect, positively affect people management here at the local and surrounding towns. So, we're really proud of that, and thank you for honoring this day.
Have to be careful, I've been known to drop these. You don't want to get a picture out of this. You have a ton of them.
I appreciate the attention.
Okay. Is Mr. Alex Smith here? Hey, y'all, come on up. We're going to talk about conservative services and an update of utility discount. Glad you could be with us today.
Thank you, thank you.
I wish that mic would have just lit before. Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to start off by saying we appreciate the partnership that was formed with the City of Statesboro and Conservative Services, and we look forward to continuing to administer any program that the city has that we feel like will benefit seniors as well as low-income individuals in the community. The program that I'm here to talk about today is a reduced utility credit that the city is offering senior citizens that's 65 years older, a $5.95 credit on their utility bill every month with an annual saving of $71.40. And what that entails is a senior comes into our office with 65 years of age, and their income is at the 100% federal poverty guideline that is set by the city. And if they meet those guidelines, we will do the application for the city, and that individual will receive a $5.95 on their credit every month. With that being said, we are also asking the city if they are willing to change the 100% federal poverty guideline to 125%, because with most of the programs that we run in Conservative Services, it's set at 125%. Just to give you an idea of what that entails, if an individual comes in our office and their income is only $990 a month, if they make more than $990 a month, then that individual will not qualify. But if you change that to 125%, that individual can now make $102,350 a month, and now that individual will be able to qualify for the reduced utility rate. We have turned around a lot of seniors because they was a dollar over that $990 a month threshold, so, and a lot of seniors are confused because with most of the programs that we're running, it's set at 125%. So, when you have those seniors that normally come in and they qualify now, and you're telling them that now you don't qualify because we do 100%, so we're at Conservative Services asking the city if they were considering the future, changing that 100% federal poverty guideline to 125%. That way, we can capture more seniors in our community that will really benefit from this credit, even though it's a small amount, but when you look at it at the annually aspect, it's a big saving. So, we just thank the city for the opportunity to administer the program, and we just look forward to continuing the process. Thank you.
So, what you proposing is you basically can raise it 25%.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, basically 25%. Just to give you the exact amount, so, right now, like I said, if an individual makes $990 a month, they will qualify, but if they make $991, they will not qualify. But if you change that to 125%, it'll go up to $1,238, $1,238 monthly. So, you can see the big difference between the two, and we feel like we're going to capture more seniors if we can get that changed to 125% of federal poverty guideline, and we just hope the city will take that into consideration in the future. That's it, ma'am.
How many people have come in so far?
So far...
So far, you've worked in UCA.
Okay, so far, we've done about 24 applications. We are anticipating in November of 2016 that number to go up because that's when we start our annual lobby program, our energy assistance program, where individuals come in and they receive a one-time payment of $350 or $310 towards their utility bill. And the City of Statesboro is already one of our vendors that we utilize, so we feel like we're going to capture a whole lot of seniors in November because that month is dedicated to individuals that's 65 years and older.
So, of the 24 that have come in, how many have been approved?
That 24 number is the ones that... Of the 24, I would say about 23 have been approved. We've turned away about six or seven people. So, we've had about 30 to 40 individuals come in, but we've only completed about 23 applications and approved them. So, usually, we just tell individuals, you know, once we calculate the income, if they don't qualify, we just let them know that right now, you don't qualify, but this may change in the future. We keep a record of names, so that if the city takes into consideration changing that federal poverty guideline to 125%, we'll call those individuals, but just make them know now you may qualify.
The ones that didn't, would they qualify under your 25% increase?
The majority, yes, ma'am, the majority, because most of the individuals, it was probably like $10 to $20 over that threshold of $990 a month.
So, Alan, what would be needed to the Council to add that 25%? That threshold of 25%, what would that, what would be needed to do?
Do you have to amend the document? I can't remember how we did it, we did by resolution or we did by ordinance, whatever percent of the 100, that 100% of the guidelines. Given ordinance. You know, like the storm right on work before it works.
I think we have all some copies that came back in.
If they want to make your ordinance where it allows you to adopt a regulation or rule, so, see if you can change, if you need to change the poverty guideline, it's a huge thing to do. So, make them, you know, make it work.
Does Council have any feelings on this? Any direction you give? Alvin, one way or the other, as you raise it there? So, what I'm hearing you say is that if it works to be 125%, that is consistent with guidelines in the ministry, and what other things do you think?
If I'm not mistaken, I want to say our low-income, our low-income energy assistance program that we administer, and we also received a grant, it's called CSBG Grant, Community Service Block Grant, and most of the programs that's run through that grant, it's set at 125% federal poverty guideline, so most of the programs that we run, I want to say our resiliency program, that's set at 125%. So, that's the main reason why we're considering using that 125% because we get a lot of funding from that particular grant, and so, I guess whenever we get out of it at the end of the year, we want to make sure that we have everything lined up based on that 125% property threshold. That's what I'm trying to say.
And that's a federal poverty threshold guideline, it's not state, federal one.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I agree, but I think we'd make it simple with that, 125%. And also, it'd be less conservative.
Yes, sir, I would agree.
So, I want to make sure I understand something. You're saying that our 100% poverty threshold of this particular, it's not a grant, but wait for a week, for lack of a better term, is going to mess up y'all's accounting with 125% of other grants that you do?
I would...
Since probably, I'm a little confused with that.
Come on, just a minute, if you don't mind, Madam President. Want to get my coworker to come up and explain just a little bit of this to my director, if you don't mind.
No, that's fine. I just want to make sure we are clear on this because I was a little confused about that.
Good morning. I'm Diane Rogers. I'm the Community Services Director, and it won't affect our compliance with any other contracts that we have. The Community Service Block Grant guidelines are 125% or below, so, of course, 100% is below 125, so, we are in compliance by doing it at 100%. Our main concern is that at 125%, that's still very low for a monthly income, and there are a lot of households, elderly in particular, that would be cut out of this discount because of that.
So, there's no, it doesn't affect how you all do business?
No, no, no.
The guideline is a little different than what you would typically be...
That's right. Everything that we do with any of the Community Service Block Grant funds is at 125% when we have served anybody over that. The lobby and the energy assistance, they do that a little bit different, but it's very similar. It's 60% of the state median income, but it lines up pretty close to the CSBG guidelines. Weatherization, I believe weatherization is actually 150%.
Can y'all tell me what the process is, and I hate to be the one asking all the questions, but I've just been curious about this. If we have somebody that comes in right now and wants to fill out and ask for that discount that you all are managing for us, what is the process for them to do that?
Okay. We do an assessment on the items required through CSBG, and it's just basically a snapshot of the household, the demographics, and what have you, and one of the benefits of doing that is that we may be able to do other things for the client while they're there, and then the paper application for the City of Statesboro. But we do, as I said, an assessment that we have in our own tracking software.
Are they coming to you?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, would they, would they have a discount later, and they'll come to the City of Statesboro, they come to you?
Yes, ma'am.
And where are you guys located? Do you have a question?
At the...
515 Denmark Street in Outridge.
In Outridge, huh?
Yes, ma'am.
So, at that time, they can look to see if they qualify, if they may qualify, or some of the... Okay.
Thank you for the opportunity, Madam President. Imagine when we know each other.
Yes, we do. We go back, we go back a few years, don't we, Alvin?
Yes, ma'am.
So, if I was none of us, you that wasn't here the last two times, I probably would have been lost. What are y'all's feelings on that? Do you want to look at raising it to be consistent? What do you think?
How about...
I'm not saying like lots and lots of applications coming in, most of them. What do y'all think?
It disappears that the guidelines that we said were in the memorandum of understanding, so I guess we just have to agree with that.
Okay, so...
But, I mean, it sounds like it'll make it easier for them. It says everybody to 125, and it's only 15,000.
Yeah, if you want to raise it up to 150,000, then...
No, 125% is only 15,000.
No, I'm talking about if we raise that threshold up about 250,000. Well, it sounds like there's consensus, so, Mr. Lee, can you go ahead and work on that for our next meeting? Thank you. Thank you, guys, for coming today. Appreciate it, that was very helpful. Thanks. Okay. Listen, do we have anyone that has asked to make a public comment today regarding an agenda item? Alvin's going to have to do some, find something up for us to, to run out to you. Anyway, more. Okay. Agenda item five is a consideration of motion to approve the consent agenda. And I will point out under item D, if you look in your packet, that grant, I think it's about 15,000, from that Homeland Security grant that's under, and just in case you wonder about that, to build capabilities and enhance homeland security, so, if y'all had a chance to look through that, if I could have a question at some point to approve the consent.
Submove.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state a yes. I oppose. All right, agenda item six. Consideration of motion to approve the professional services agreement in Task Order One, Ecological Planning Group, the amount $72,040. Mr. Bolles, are you going to speak to this?
Thank you, Mayor. Jason Bolles, Director of Public Works, I'm here. What you have before you today is a contract in Task Order One for services provided by an ecological planning group, if you recall, this is the same consultant that provided services for us, I think, two to three years ago, in compiling our progress to stormwater management program, and which ultimately led to this former utility. A lot of these items that included this agreement on Task Order were included in the progress of stormwater management program, and these include GIS inventory condition assessment, city staff training, development of maintenance plan and SOPs, updates to our capital improvement plan, delineation of the drainage systems, hydraulic and hydrologic modeling, central CIP design cost estimates, give us some guidance on moving forward with our CIPs, updates to our drought regulations, EBS Phase Two compliance assistance, and additional consulting services, which include assistance for the stormwater program and securing grant loans and loans for future projects. We have separate EPG services in separate task orders, so what you have before you is the agreement, contract if you will, and Task Order One. Task Order One includes the drainage system inventory assessment, staff training, maintenance program and SOPs, CIP update, and project management as new. In addition to their services, we work with, are working with Darren and the central services GIS staff to assist us and assist the consultant. Darren and his staff have agreed to assist us so we can reduce our expenses, hopefully, that we incur with the consultant, and it will also provide us with some institutional memory for staff members that are familiar with this program, familiar with GIS layers of special stormwater. We have to say any questions?
Maybe the next lady will tell us when we have serious stormwater issues.
I don't know.
It's the only good, it's always fun.
Good, ma'am.
Good, ma'am. Any questions for Jason Fies, full motion? If not...
Some of the madmen are down there.
Great. We performed 20% on the initial study. We were going to consult with EPG to perform the remaining 80%, then Darren and Justin jumped in and said, "Look, we can probably handle that," and said, "This will be additional 20% of our mapping, and hopefully GIS and our city staff can carry the rest of the way, the remaining 60%."
Do you think we can do that, I mean, more efficiently, or at least cheaper than they can?
Well, the goal is, actually, that was a little, and mirror, mirror their guy of the next 20%, and depending on the load and when we want to get it done, we project anywhere from remaining, half of the remaining 60% to all of it, depending on that building. But, yeah, I think it's well worth it.
If for some reason, we're running some hiccups along the way, then we'll probably have to come back before you for the subsequent task order, which we'll have additional task orders to complete the remaining items here, but we'd have to come back with additional task order, or whatever percentage of the remaining we're mapping and employing, but hopefully not, I believe this will work well. I'm excited about this and appreciate Darren and his staff's commitment to this.
It's not too often Jason invokes the word excited. So, this must be really good stuff. Service that for rare occasions. Any further questions? If not, do I have a motion to approve the professional services agreement in Task Order One, the Ecological Planning Group, the amount of $72,040?
Submove.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state a yes.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Now, agenda item seven, consideration of motion to award the purchase of a new cat feller D6N waste handler. No, sir.
Darren, record, record, Simple Services, thank you. We're recommending the purchase of a new cat feller D6N waste handler, does it for the Georgia State contract. This doesn't, I piggyback this contract, it really doesn't play into our local preference and stuff, but probably needs to be noted, they do have a satellite office on 301 South, I believe. But, we recommend that we follow the state contract and purchase this, those are $321,918.90. We had $350,000 budget, and this will be a $2,030 loss loan for us. I'll be glad to answer your question. Thank you.
It's pretty exciting.
It is, isn't it? It is exciting when you're working out. You know, a lot of times the state contracts work, you can, it's based on a cost plus percentage per state, so you can customize it to your needs, so, that's what we've done here, but that's how you come to the price and whatnot.
Are you replacing existing one of those?
We are.
So, what are you going to do with what you're replacing?
We're going to bring this back to Council and probably down the road, once you receive this surplus, and we'll probably on a, off, we'll go a little catch up. We've got a lot of variations, as far as our chief, though, do not...
Okay, any further questions for Mr. Fies? If not, a motion to award the purchase of a new cat feller D6N waste handler, does it for the Georgia State contract, the amount of $301,918.90 for use in our inert landfill facility.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All favorably please state must say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion refused, thank you. Um agenda item eight, consideration of motion to authorize the mayor to enter into appropriate contracts or agreements. To form sister city relationship with Tap, Rata and Montecampari. Inland, um but can be out of these agreements to impose more than fifteen hundred dollars of costs to the city station. Um our premises, by saying if y'all called back in April. Darren Van House, one of the folks from Georgia Southern Mercy came and asked us if we'd be interested in entering into these sister city agreements. That Georgia Southern are working very closely with both of them taking students over et cetera and creating a relationship there and thought it would be good for the city overall to do that. Two meetings ago, I believe Darren, uh they came back in front of us and we discussed that they're going to take a trip at the end of um this month. In the beginning of November, excuse me, November to go over and see these two cities and will we continue to consider that? And would members of council like to join in? Um I don't know who has decided to go, I know that Councilman Jones is very interested in going, Matt Councilman Jones asked us, I would be put on the agenda to go and improve this relationship up. So that's where we are today, so I place another agenda. And if y'all are so inclined, we can go ahead and vote for that. I don't think it's possible to see to become a sister city of both of these, I think individually it's between two hundred and fifteen and five hundred dollars per city. So combined, it may come, it should come under that threshold of fifteen hundred dollars. To my knowledge, it doesn't obligate us to do anything. Other than to be a sister city in good faith and then if we so choose it sometime to make some sort of overture or go over there as a, you know, as a group or something like that. I would be kind to them if they want to come see us. And extend courtesy and that way, so that to my knowledge is what this obligates us to do, which is basically, doesn't obligate the city to do anything other than just to be extended well, so.
I think I, I, again, I mean, this is a good opportunity for seeing states to go out and develop a relationship with a sister city. And with the official and home run, not only industrial, but also bring likes to student. Georgia Southern, East Georgia, OT City. But at this time, if our person will not dare to go, I definitely would like to see one of my councilmen to go over there and develop a relationship maybe in the future. Who knows, I mean, not this time.
Well, hopefully, um I think the problem a little bit with this time going is it's fairly short notice. I mean, it was about a month out to make plans, to inland where we could have from there about, so. You know, hopefully, uh maybe that, they can get over here and see us and we can make some plans in a little bit more long range to go see them, so.
Saw something good.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with you.
You can definitely see it in officials, whatever council goes over there, you know, not your vacation, but opportunity to represent the city and help with good leadership.
I think we get some approval and back, back. Any further discussion before I ask for a motion?
Um Darren called me yesterday, uh and said that both DCs want to have a signing ceremony, an official signing ceremony. Uh and he asked either if he could be given permission to sign any form of city state's report, or ask where if city council is going to take it, they give a sign. Um I'm not sure exactly what he asked to, I mean exactly what kind of official document he was talking about, but I said I would talk to legal. And see, see if legal could talk to him and find out exactly what he was talking about. Um and that's, I guess that's something I'll bring hopefully as we next agenda, if we need to vote on this.
I don't know, I mean, is anybody planning on going?
I'm ninety-nine percent sure I'm, I'm going.
Well, just find out what it is that won't sign and get it out and have fun. Take it. No, we're not wanting to have that. Those, I, I want to see a lot of pictures from Albania now.
I've uh, not going to Albania, I don't think. I supposed to, I'm Albanian. I'm not, I'm not really sure exactly uh what the, what the, what the plans are. The rest of them I'm supposed to be going to Albania because that has to be the summer.
Okay.
That's not in my budget to go to Albania.
Okay, well then I guess what we want to do is await a report at the next meeting. There you go, okay. So do we want to go ahead and have a motion to authorize the mayor to enter into appropriate contacts, excuse me, contracts or agreements to form sister city relationships? With the two cities that were listed there under agenda item eight.
Subdue.
Do I have a second? Okay, any discussion? All favorably please state must say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion refused. Okay, at this point we have agenda item nine, which is other business from city council. So I'll turn to city council, is anybody having other business they would like to discuss? Okay, believe it or not, neither do I. Alright, so moving right on to city manager's comments.
Jeff is in place, if his uh important, it's not close.
Morning, Mayor, Council, Jeffrey Grant, Director of Human Resources. I'm talking to you guys long, just gonna do a brief update. As you guys know, probably about a year and a half ago, um kind of embarked on making some changes with our workers' comp GMA. Transitioning it to travelers, before I even get started, um got Darren, right there, Darren's huge instrumental in coordinating um that transition. In other words, I'm saying all that because it wasn't just one person, there's a lot of people who collaborated and worked on this, who've been continuing to work on it, Darren's been huge with that. And Flavius Darling and Christina Johnson, um the HR department as well too, so they've just been real aggressive. And working with um Icon Davis as well, and as well as Travelers to kind of make all this happen. We're making progress, just to give you guys an update. And it won't just be when we're making progress, we'll get an update, we'll get an update at all times and kind of let you guys know where we are. Um with our workers' comp, so. Just kind of overview, so we'll talk about, we'll talk about claims from two thousand thirteen to fifteen, um costs from thirteen to fifteen. We'll talk about the plan changes we made um in two thousand fifteen. And then we'll talk about workers' comp claims from thirteen to fifteen versus sixteen, and workers' comp costs from thirteen to fifteen versus sixteen. And then we'll talk about kind of where we're going, so kind of where we were, where we are and kind of where we're going, that's kind of the basic outline. You'll see right here, I know it's a lot of stuff, but right here's two thousand thirteen, fourteen and fifteen. You've got indemnity, you've got medical only, you've got report only, this total is twelve claims. So in two thousand fifteen, there were seventy-five claims, two thousand fourteen, there were seventy-one, and two thousand fifteen, there were sixty-six. Now of those claims, you'll see in two thousand thirteen, forty-one of them were reported by employees, they never went to the doctor. They never got sought any type of medical treatment, didn't cost us any money or anything like that, but they just reported it, they followed procedures and so forth. And that was the forty-one. And you'll see thirty, uh if the employee got hurt to some degree, they went to immediate care, they got band-aid, they got stitches, whatever it was, they sought medical treatment. And then you'll see here in two thousand thirteen, fifteen, um you'll see indemnity, that is basically when the employee's gonna be out of work. So lost time and we as a city have to make them whole. So you'll see here, we had four in two thousand thirteen, we had nine in two thousand fourteen, and we had eight in two thousand fifteen. You'll see that claims are going down to some degree, but you also see the lost time was actually going down. Those were your larger claims, right there. I think in two thousand fourteen, we had like two claims that that were over a hundred thousand dollars. So you can, you can imagine, it wasn't so much that we had a lot of claims and it cost a lot, it was more, we had a lot of the, we, we had a little of, of big claims. Uh that occurred, so that's where you see the raise, uh you see in second when the costs went up. A large, large part of it came from this area where employees were actually out of work and costs the city to make them, them uphold, so. So what you'll see, you just saw claims, so now you'll see uh workers' comp costs in two thousand thirteen to fifteen. You'll see total cost, three seventy-one in two thousand thirteen, four fifty-nine in two thousand fourteen, and four ninety-five. So you'll see over a three-year span, there was a twenty-five percent increase in our workers' comp total cost. Um what you'll see here is it's our regular premium, that's a premium that we have, we were self, partially self insured, so we have a premium. But then this is, this claim cost, that's out of pocket, that's what we came out of pocket on top of our premium, which gave us our total cost. So that's claim cost, premium cost, and you'll see total cost, and you'll see how it rose over two thousand thirteen, fifteen. So we saw these, we saw these increases happening and then we came together as staff, and as I said, Darren was instrumental in coordinating those efforts to switch from GMA to um travelers. At that point, we realized it wasn't just enough to change carriers, we had to make some fundamental changes to our safety program. So these are just some of the changes that we made in two thousand fifteen, these are just more so the major ones. We've made some smaller ones that didn't quite make the list, but I figured these were the things that you were most important to, obviously, talk about that, change carriers. Um we set a goal to reduce workers' comp payment by ten percent. Um we created and hired a full-time uh HR safety coordinator. We established an employee safety advisory committee. And so one of the few things they've done um since they started was they developed a committee guide, which um had a charter statement, goals, committee guidelines, how, how is the committee actually gonna run, and the board, so they, they worked on their element, so. The other thing was uh we revised the workers' compound physicians, uh we did, we did have some issues where, you know, we would send employees, uh somebody got hurt. And you know, we found them kind of going through that cycle of, uh we weren't getting the answers we kind of really wanted from some of the physicians. So we added some physicians that were from outside on the, on the board, so, so we fundamentally changed our, our panel. And number six, removed the administration of seven-day rule. That was kind of more of an internal, internal thing for the city where employee got hurt, they were paid straight time for seven days until the workers' comp kicked in. We, we removed that, employees actually responsible for sick time, that is best practice, that is fairly standard, uh most organizations do that. Um I can think of two or three situations where um, you know, the employee got hurt and they realized they didn't have any time, they said, I'm coming back to work. Right, so, so it worked, right? It motivated them to come back versus, you know, we're doing straight time, it didn't motivate them to come back. And a lot of times they would try to kind of wait out that seven days and um we, we saw a pattern of that, so. And as you guys know, the longer the employee's out, the more they don't want to come back, that's just kind of generally speaking. Not all employees are like that, but I'm just saying, generally speaking, that's kind of what happens. And then number seven, city employee travelers that conduct an organization-wide safety risk assessment, what they did was they came in in November of two thousand fifteen. And they evaluated our safety program as is, and they, the, the goal was to identify opportunities, um areas that we needed to work on or. Assessment was completed, I'm performing a number of interviews with employees from various positions throughout the city. Uh they chose twelve employees in leadership positions, uh sixteen non-leadership employees. And they also met with senior leadership who do operations and manage practices, so. They, they provided some recommendations back to us and uh we've actually been working on those recommendations. And we had our employee safety advisory committee, um travelers have actually been present, had majority of them, so, so they, they, they haven't been participating from afar. They've been here aggressively to work with us, so.
Jeff, what are a few examples of those recommendations, just?
Um, one of them is, uh you'll see on a strategic outlook, I'll share it after, is uh, one is a safety suggestion system. Which we'll implement later this year, um another one is um.
Is that an hour and a quarter weeks term or something?
Absolutely, absolutely, and uh the sample that would be, you know, employee puts in a suggestion. And then we create some type of reward program where uh the department takes pictures of like before and afters kind of deal, and we kind of reward them for making those changes. Or implementing the changes that the employee has suggested, so that is, but that is one of them. Another one is, um we'll see later on, is uh work rules in the department, a lot of departments do have work rules. Um and the recommendation was to kind of do the standard operating procedures for each department, but we kind of scaled that back. We said, you know, one thing we do on a robot is uh real simple, three to five work rules in your department, very simple. And it could be example, wear your goggles, wear your dinosaur shoes, you know, don't bend while picking up a box, and those are your three for the department. A lot of times what happens, departments, not necessarily here, just in general, will create these big SOPs and employees don't understand it, so. We kind of scaled back the recommendations and was, was just very simple. That the department employees can come up with and they can post it in their department, something they see every day. Almost like a, how do you use it, this is an example, almost like a football dance, almost like a Notre Dame thing, you know, you walk by it and you come out the game and you hit it and you, you kind of know your, your, your what rules and everybody knows, so we're gonna, we're gonna do that this year as well, too, with the department something, so.
Is there, I, because I know a lot of companies that everyone goes to a plant, I see it, a manufacturing plant where it says, so many days without an accident. Just keep that, that front line awareness, that safety awareness, is that perceived, are y'all looking at something like that or is that perceived to be negative? People won't report if you've got so many days without an accident, but if you don't attach a report to it, then there's not a negative indication reporting wise, so I mean, what, what is the thought process, I'm just curious, what, what is the recommendation thought process on that?
We, we talked about that, um I think we, we, we kind of stayed away from that. Sometimes it could be a disturbance, people putting in their, their uh report of injuries. Maybe there's something, I'm not putting in my report in here, I think we want to take more of a uh educational approach, more of a like a safety suggestion system, you know, just more ideas like that versus deterring. We want them to be reported, as you can see, most of them report, they do, right, so, so I guess I'll defer that, so.
What's the video recommendation? Put it out in video until it slows down a wire before, because I.
I don't remember seeing that one, that might be like it, I've been over it, so I can have a chance to see it. So now you'll see, basically what I've, what we've done is we've taken two thousand thirteen, fifteen, and we compared it to two thousand sixteen. So what you'll see here is, and I think what's more really important is this right here. It's that lost time. Now those are, those are your claims that end up being your larger claims, people being out of work, it's going down. And that's what we want to see, you know, less of those, then your, then your costs are gonna go down more than that. You'll also see right here a twenty-three percent decrease in number of claims as, as a total. I think this number is more important than this number, it really is, but I think it's important that you see that in the books. Well, for this report, we actually went by, since we started with travelers, eight one, right Darren? Eight one, I went back, eight one every year prior to that, so that can match up the numbers with the current year with travelers, so not necessarily might be, I don't know, five month, um but they all did match, so. Then you'll see right here, for costs, you'll see our premium.
So we move to public comments, and according to my agenda, Mr. Bill Thomas, in the course of speaking to councils, Mr. Thomas here. Then, do we have anybody else that, that registered for a public comment this week? Uh, in that case, we move to agenda item twelve, which is a consideration of a motion to adjourn, do I have one?
Jeff, you have something to say?
I'm sorry. Okay, I'll go back.
You can see him ignoring you.
Yeah. You were doing this and it wasn't going anywhere. I kind of did that, too. No, no, anyway, so I'll go back, and then, did you motion travel?
Yeah, I motioned.
So you seconded it. All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, meeting is adjourned.